Okay, so everybody ready? Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda? There's second comments or questions? All in favor? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty fifth? Comments or questions? All in favor? Cat, could we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, immediately before the meeting this evening. We discussed the status of some litigation as well as real estate matters. No decisions were made, no deliberation to this.
Thank you. Does the public have any comment on any non-agenda item? Any item that is not on the agenda, folks on Zoom or in the moon? Okay, we'll move on to announcements and upcoming events. So first, I'd like to offer congratulations to James Redfield, Holly Dennis, and Vicki Smith upon their completion of the Pocono Leadership Program by Northampton Community College's Center for Business and Industry. So I understand they are graduating tomorrow, it's their last class. So congratulations. Also, congratulations to the Monroe County Historical Association on their groundbreaking earlier in the month on the Estroud Mansion Expansion and the Heritage Center. So there's more information on the side about that. Speaking of history, later this month, on Monday, June twenty sixth, on the anniversary of the Marshall's Creek Explosion from nineteen sixty-four, there will be a dedication ceremony for the Pennsylvania Historical Monitor for this explosion, which was awarded to Middle Smithfield by the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission. So we hope that you can join us at Evangeline's and there's information also available about that and thank you, Holly is also our physical liaison. She is replacing Michelle tonight as Township Secretary to take these minutes on the successful application. Speaking of the Marshall's Creek Explosion, the exhibit for the explosion is now up at the Community and Cultural Center. So you could see many articles and photos from that time period and learn more about the explosion. Also, speaking about the Community and Cultural Center, thank you to all of those who gave blood earlier in the month, will be Red Cross Blood Drive this Saturday at the Community and Cultural Center, so it'll be six ten at ten AM. The Master Gardener Amy Armstrong will conduct a gardening class on weeds. So folks can learn the difference between a common weed, a non-just weed, and an invasive weed and what to do about it. They'll have their Ask a Master Gardener table out there so that you can bring all your boyar gardening woes there. And speaking of master gardeners, the Penn State Co-op Extension is nearing their deadline for accepting applications for their master gardener program. So any resident, the township has decided that any resident that takes this program will have and successfully completes it can have their cost partially reimbursed. So we share the cost with you because we know that you'll be doing all of your volunteer hours in this new township. Speaking of gardening, Chris tells me there are still some raised beds available at the Community Gardens Park from some folks who could no longer maintain their beds this year. And the Estroudsburg area school district summer meal program starts this Wednesday. So we have information over on the side table about that too, as well as our website. You can, it, there's no cost to any child that's eighteen or under. And the summer meal program starts this Wednesday, June fourteenth, and ends August eleventh. Saturday, June seventeenth, at Country Club of the Poconos, will be a golf tournament to benefit Valor. And there's many ways that you can help. You could send a donation, you could be a corporate sponsor, you could purchase an ad. All of those opportunities are still available and we hope that you, you avail yourselves of them. And Mark or Mike, do you have any? Any announcements at all, anything?
I think it's worth noting that Villa Tribe will be closed this Monday, June twelfth, for probably two and a half, three months, as we replace the bridge. It's a pretty significant undertaking that we're doing. We've notified Control Center, State Police, School, EMS Fire, sent the mail out to the CCP ordinance in particular as they're primarily affected. But just sort of was aware that it'll be closed for, I would say ninety days.
Thank you. It's a pretty big project.
Some speed bumps in too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just as a warning.
I'm good with you.
Just as a warning to the people who dropped in.
Right. Yeah, they should be there tomorrow, so we're not here on weekends, but you can certainly call Mark.
Is there a motion to accept, thank you. Is there anything to, is there a motion to accept the committee and department report?
Okay.
So.
Comments or questions? All right, if you will get all the full committee and department reports on the side tables and they'll also be available on our website afterwards. Correspondence, Holly, do we have any correspondence?
We're in a letter from AARP from the
Yeah, Holly didn't want to read it because they are thanking Holly. So we received the, yeah, so. So Beth Summers from the AARP wrote a very lovely card saying she, they appreciate the contribution to the success of their tax eight season and this year they completed a lot of returns for folks. And they do this free of charge for senior citizens. So you can see how the need for our services, how great the need for our services is. The average adjusted gross income is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars on returns. So anyway, she wanted to thank Holly for her contribution to the success of their program. So thank you. Yeah, yeah, she, she also manages the Community and Cultural Center. So Michael, bid opening and possible order?
Okay, so the first thing is our super, super pay, we have one bid. Remember you go through the unit cost? The wearing nine point five millimeters, sixty-nine forty-seven. The ton. Twenty-five millimeter base. Fifty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents a ton. Nineteen millimeter wearing clothes, sixty-two fifty-seven. Nine point five is sixty-nine forty-seven. And nineteen is sixty-two fifty-seven, same.
Do you have any, do you have any comparison to last year?
I don't. I want to say it's probably less than ten percent, but it's probably close to around ten, ten higher. I think it was like sixty-three, I want to say. Being that they're the only bidder. I, I, well, I guess first we have to make a motion to accept a bid, so I'll make that motion.
So, comments or questions? All in favor?
I think a motion to award subject to engineer review.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Good, your next one is seal code. We got two bids. First one is from AMS. All right. So the total for the seal code is thirty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents.
What, I'm sorry, say it again?
Thirty-four, five twenty-eight, fifty-five. The ultimate for the fox seal is twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Fox seal. Basically, you go over the township. So it's not loose gravel, what everybody complains about. So we did that as an ultimate this year. The next one is coconut spray paint. Base bid is fifty-one thousand four hundred and two dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the fox seal is eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents. So round numbers there at seventy thousand and AMS is at fifty-six six. So I'll make a motion to
Comments or questions? All in favor?
I'll make a motion to award to AMS subject to, uh, engineer review.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
The last we have is for our infamous energy generators. We'll have one bid. This is for installing generators for three, excuse me. Instill six generators with transfer switch and header, et cetera. Is forty thousand eight hundred dollars?
Yeah.
That's a good question. Bayer Electric.
What was David?
Bayer Electric, B-A-Y-E-R.
B-A-Y-E-R.
They also had bid out of number two to set the generators three thousand dollars, presumably it's forty-three eight, eight hundred.
Three thousand?
Yeah. Well, I don't think I can find pages here, so I'm not sure what's going on with this one. So I'll just make a motion to accept the bid or review.
One second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Unless the board feels compelled, I'm not.
I think that's fine, but there's, you know, the generators again aren't expected for a couple months. There's not a particular urgency, I would say, so let's review it.
There's a lot of black pages, I understand, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll take a look at it then.
Great.
And that's the end of the bid opening there.
Thank you. Now we have your treasuries report.
Excellent. I'll make a motion from our general count, one hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty-one cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our sewer count, forty-three thousand ninety-two dollars and twelve cents.
One second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Make a motion for a local two, but now sixty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion for a job, thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
A motion for a cable franchise of about forty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and six cents.
Second, seconded, comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Michael. Solicitors report.
Thank you. There are two items under my report tonight. The first one is the property maintenance proposed ordinance. Again, nothing has been advertised to the public here in the saving, there's no action necessary. The intent is to have a follow-up conversation on the draft property maintenance ordinance. If you recall, you had a couple of meetings discussing some of the concerns or issues associated with the ordinance. So what I've done is I've made some changes to the ordinance that was previously drafted and we can go through, if you'd like, quickly the revisions or if you had questions or concerns. But maybe what I'll do is I'll just touch on the ones that I think were more of a concern from the board and the public during those discussions. So if you look first, the definition section, we, I am, I did make some changes to the definition enforcement officer. It can change to read now, any building official, zoning officer, indoor code enforcement officer authorized by the township to enforce the ordinance. Previously included building inspector, fire inspector, law enforcement officer, and other people specifically authorized. So it narrowed down who is considered a enforcement officer. I also, I also amended the definition infestation. So now it will be the presence of an unusually large number of insects, rodents, vermin, and/or other pests. If you go to section one thirty-four six, we made some revisions to buildings and structures that are of concern. Specifically on page four subsection E, all foundation walls of buildings shall be maintained plumbing free from open and structurally compromising cracks and breaks. Adding structurally compromising. Similar reference in subsection F when talking about exterior walls. If you move on to page five subsection G, we added a reference to creating a public nuisance, so the roof and flashing of buildings shall be sound tight and not have defects that admit rain and/or create a public nuisance. We removed or proposing to remove the reference to roof drainage shall be adequate to prevent dampness, so on and so forth. In subsection I, we're proposing to delete the reference, the last sentence regarding when required, all exposed surfaces of metal or wood shall be protected from the elements, so on and so forth. That sentence proposed to be deleted. Subsection K, again a deletion of that, that last sentence regarding all exposed surfaces of metal and wood shall be protected. And again, a lot of this was in response to those discussions and concerns from the public. Some additional revisions we're removing. We are proposing to remove subsections N relating to all blazing materials shall be maintained free of cracks and holes, as well as subsection P regarding every basement hatchway shall be maintained to prevent the entrance. And what we did was in subsection nine, we just included basement entrances. Again, trying to stay on maybe the more common comments and complaints from the public on the prior draft. If you look at subsection one thirty-four eight A, when talking about infestation, we added certain language to indicated it needs to rise to the level of a public nuisance. Now reads, all structures, lots, and yards shall be kept free of rodents and other wild and feral animal harborage and infestation that rises to the level of a public nuisance and/or is otherwise a violation of other township ordinances. So we referenced the fact that it's, it needs to rise to the level of a nuisance associated with that. If you move on to one thirty-four nine, under miscellaneous provisions, we are proposing to add two new subsections. Ones to read subsection E, the maintenance of or storage by an owner or lessee of any non-motorized equipment requiring a title such as boats and/or trailers, and which equipment has rusted, broken, or sharp edges, missing tires, and other components resulting in the unsafe suspension of the equipment. And again, that's under a section where it's, it's a prohibition to allow for that type of equipment. And then we also incorporated the chapter one thirty-six nuisances of the codes of ordinances for the code of ordinances in subsection F, that section. When talking about the notice of violation in some, in section one thirty-four eleven, we added some clarifying language regarding the warning letters regarding the notice of violation to clarify the time period associated with that. In the penalty section of one thirty-four thirteen, we revised it. There are a couple different options in the second class township code. Given the complaints or concerns from the public regarding the way previously read, it now reads, any person, firm, or corporation who shall violate any of the provisions of this chapter shall, upon being found liable, therefore, in a civil enforcement proceeding, proceeding, pay a civil judgment of not less oh, I'm sorry, a civil judgment of not more than six hundred dollars plus all court costs, including so on and so forth. There was a lot of comments from the public on that section, so we revised that to another option in the second class township code. But other than that, I, you know, I was just trying to touch base on the, probably the more prevalent comments or concerns from the public. I'll look through to see if I missed any of the big ticket items, but does the board have any questions or concerns or additional revisions that you feel might be necessary? Take me through your report. Eight or seven? So if you look at subsection one thirty-four eleven, notice of violation. When the enforcement notice, or when the enforcement officer realizes or learns that there's a violation after doing an inspection or any type of observation, they'll, the enforcement officer will first send a warning letter to the owner or occupant of the property and providing them with a reasonable period of time to resolve the violation. That's not a notice of violation, that's not a citation, it's simply a letter saying, hey, we were out, we saw that your property is in violation, you need to do X, Y, and Z in order to come into compliance. I mean Judy's here, normally the timeframe associated with that, I mean, it depends on the violation. If it's cutting grass, maybe a reasonable period of time is a couple of weeks, who knows? But normally you're looking at it depending upon the violation of thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days. So the reasonable period of time in that warning letter, the intent is to put them on notice and say, hey, fix it and we'll move on. If they don't fix it within that period of time, chances, chance starts, a notice of violation is not going to go out in the next day. But in the event that they don't comply after receiving the warning letter, the next step would be for the enforcement officer to proceed with a notice of violation, which is the more formal violation, not a citation with the district magistrate yet, but it's a notice that you're in violation. It's a, it's a formal action correspondence from the enforcement officer. And from that period of time, they'll have thirty days to appeal or correct deficiency. And in the event that they fail to remedy the situation within that time period, thirty days, the next step for the township would be to file a complaint with the district magistrate. And that'll be an additional, it'll be hearing before the district magistrate. Now, there are other options if, if it, if it's a, if it's a significant issue where there's a significant public health and safety, welfare concern. The township, if they, if the property owner fails to resolve and comply with the ordinance, you can file an injunctive relief with the court of common pleas because they have the power to, to not just find the owner, but to actually require someone to do something. But again, that takes a long time in the process for the enforcement officer in the township to pull the trigger on a complaint. Before that, well before that, there's going to be a warning letter that goes out. And again, it's probably not going to be on the thirty-first, thirty-second day, but after that, if they fail to comply, the next step would be a notice of violation. And if they fail to comply within that thirty-day time period, that's when the township decides whether or not to take the next step, to file a complaint with the district magistrate and/or maybe a complaint with the court of common pleas depending upon what the violation is and what the public impact is. I mean Judy, did I, is that pretty accurate or did I miss anything?
Well, I think there's also an option where we do have to state in the notice of violation that Middle Smithfield Township can itself correct the deficiencies. And I think that would come only if, let's say, you know, we get to the point of even civil complaint and there is a time where perhaps the the property owner doesn't even respond to the civil complaint.
Right.
And now, you know, and generally speaking, that would be in the case of an abandoned property where this, this nuisance exists for this amount of time and there's been no response and there's been no action taken on the property. But Middle Smithfield can go in and take care of it themselves and we have done that in the past under the nuisance ordinance on particular properties that have sat there for a very, very long time and needed to be remedied.
I think there was a question. How, how much more life does it cost the township to incur the, to incur the process of magistrate from violation to having to go for the magistrate? And is the property owner responsible for reimbursing the township for this?
So with an enforcement, if we get to that point, if after the warning letter goes out, if after the notice of violation goes out, then if the township proceeds with a complaint before district magistrate, the township always asks to get reimbursed for its costs associated with filing a complaint, costs associated with my time if I'm involved. We always ask for it. They're entitled to it by statute, but it's, you, the township's never made whole, unfortunately. If you're asking me if the township's ever made whole, we, we asked for it, but nine times out of ten, the district magistrate, the judge, maybe they'll, they'll issue them some. The district magistrate, the judge, maybe they'll they'll issue them some, they're going to issue them a fine if they're clearly in violation. They'll maybe require them to pay a certain amount of attorney's fees, but there's a lot of costs and time that go into these cases and the township's never made a hole. Unfortunately.
Any other questions or comments? Amendment?
So I mean, at this point, if the board has questions or if you have additional revisions or additions you want to see incorporated into the ordinance. And that would be the time to let me know. If not. Uh. I can circulate. This version in final form for you to consider if you wanted. At a future meeting to authorize for advertisement unless you're at a point tonight, you're ready to authorize it to be advertised. For another public hearing for consideration. As up to the board and however you want to proceed.
The one thirty four eleven A that we're we just described. Um, so that is a warning letter.
Yep.
And then the timeframe. Um, to cure. Can we put at the end of that typically within thirty to forty five days?
Uh. See the, I'm going to be honest with you, that that warning letter is a very informal.
Right.
Process.
So but I'm saying at the end. So it's sort of clear that. You have thirty or forty five days before we take on that next step.
You can, but when you start putting in that into an informal warning letter, then you're going to be held to thirty or forty five days. When maybe sometimes it's. I mean granted. It doesn't necessarily impact those that are going to take longer because if it'll just be the enforcement office just not pulling the trigger on a notice violation, but if you want to give them. Twenty days because it's a. Cutting the grass or something that doesn't require the full thirty. That's why sometimes with that that warning letter, because it's such an informal. Hey, we're giving them an opportunity to fix it before we do anything formal. We kind of keep that open because we let that somewhat within the discretion of. The enforcement officers of what the appropriate timeframe is. But we can, I mean, if you feel more, if you want to put in a thirty day timeframe. We can. But I I I I bet. A lot of the times that warning letter goes out. And between that time and the time of the notice of violation, it's probably much more than thirty days.
Generally, um. We also. I have found in the past that a warning letter is not usually responded to. Um, unfortunately, we don't get as much um response to a warning letter, but um, you know. There's times too where we'll say in the warning letter to. You know. Not to ignore the violation within those ten days, but to respond to our office within ten days so that we could, you know, start that conversation. Because we don't have everyone's phone number or way to contact them, but. Um, it usually is longer than. Those ten days that we wait, you know, to to file anything or send out a formal. It also kind of ties our hands a little bit with um, if it's a. Um. If it's an issue that's very concerning, we might even want to put a shorter timeframe on the warning letter. Because we want to be able to move into a formal enforcement because of the degree of. Of the um. Nuisance or. You know. If the structure's falling down. We don't want to drag it out. For thirty to forty five days and then another thirty days.
Which will be probably forty five days.
Right.
And then another thirty days to get in front of the magistrate.
Right.
We'll open it six months probably.
Right.
Till it sees the magistrate.
But we'll follow your lead whatever you. I do have a question about this section. We could just clarify the last sentence of section B. As you're thinking about whether you want on that one thirty four eleven B. It says a copy of the said notice of violation shall be posted in a conspicuous place. Place on the premises, subject premises and at Middlesmith Field Township Municipal Building.
Hmm, um, it's not uncommon for the notice of violation to be posted on the property.
Okay.
Uh, why it's at the Middlesmith Field Municipal Building? That I don't know. Uh, that's not a requirement. That's uh. I recall.
Just that it says shall.
Yeah.
Can we say may?
Um, I would require it to be posted.
I would just take that in those.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the purpose of posting it at township.
Okay. So the notice of violation then should be mailed, regular and certified mail and posted at the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can take out, we can take out and at the Middlesmith Field Township Municipal Building.
And you're going to add mailed and certified.
Um, it says.
It should be.
Up higher, um. The owner and occupant shall be notified by certified mail or through personal service and generally it's certified and regular that we send. So do we want to go back to section A and? Whether or not you want the thirty to forty five days Mike suggested.
I understand. I I think. Trying to preempt.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Meeting, what do you consider reasonable? And the answer is it depends. It depends on the violation. If it's, if it's grass, it'll be a smaller amount of time.
Yeah, and I mean.
If it's serious, it'll be shorter.
An important response to that. Is that even regardless of the warning letter. There's a period of time that goes with the warning letter. But there's also the thirty days that goes with the notice of violation. So.
Right.
I mean, even if even if for some reason there is an immediate need for action and the warning letter only provides fifteen days. There's still the thirty days on the notice violation, so that's forty five days.
Right.
Uh, but like I said, most times and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, most times those warning letters. It's probably a thirty day timeframe and it probably ends up being more or longer than that. Uh, before notice violation is uh filed. And that's probably because you're trying to see if the property owner is going to take steps to actually.
Right.
Solve the issue. Resolve the issue.
That that's what I would think the important thing would be to follow through on and reply to our office within ten days. Of proceedings, etc. If they do that, that's almost automatic and needing good faith.
And even our current enforcement notices that go out under zoning. Uh, they have those thirty days to appeal to the zoning hearing board, but it always says near the end. Uh, you know, steps you should take immediately, respond to our office within five days of our enforcement notice. Because we want them to, you know, contact us right away, not wait the thirty days before they reach out.
Question?
Ask me. And regards to communication, when we, when you spoke about um. Regular mail and certified mail. Are you going to consider include um electronic mail also? Or is everybody stipulated somewhere in there?
Um. With a notice of violation, there are certain service requirements and. Email does not satisfy, meaning. Uh, when you get a citation or it's got to be certified return receipt and.
But electronics have that too, returns.
I understand that, but the the purpose, the real purpose of this is putting people on notice. And being able to prove to a judge at some point that we did that and the judge is not going to accept. Electronic mail as proper notice.
I don't even think we would have email.
And that's another, yeah, that's a good point.
Most of the time we don't, but if we do have email addresses on file, I have in the past. Sent it by email and I will say in my email, I'm emailing this to you as a courtesy. It's also been sent regular and certified mail. Please respond and sign the green card or or whatever it may be if I have something on file, but I would say. Ninety percent of the time we don't have an email. We we try to collect those as we meet our residents, but we don't always have them on file.
So what's the provision that and Judy? Or the only path? I guess I should say the only path. Is through the magistrate. You don't want to comply.
Hmm, no, like I said. If it's, remember the magistrate. Uh, their hands are somewhat tied as to the type of belief that you provide. If we are in a situation where the. Where the property is. A significant. Hazard to the public. Uh, I would probably at that point say let's not. After the notice, after the warning letter, after the notice violation, it makes more sense to file a complaint. And action in the court of please as opposed to the local district magistrate because the court, a judge at the court of please. They have more power to require someone to do certain things on their property to resolve it. Right, almost in certain situations. Now that costs more time and money. But at the end of the day, you're 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 uh, you're going to the correct venue to get something really done. But for the smaller ones that there's no real public health or immediately. Concerning issue that's going to impact the public. Um, district magistrate is normally the. So low cost effective deficient way to go.
But as far as the person who feels the zone officer is picking on them. What their 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 solution, if the only solution is follow through.
Uh, well.
I inherited a house. I've not been settled for six months. He has such a big hole in the roof. I don't have the penny money.
Uh huh. Uh. There's a lot, so so there are a lot of. Pieces to this that take part before we get to the district magistrate. So if there was a property owner. That received a warning letter, received the notice of violation, uh, and they disagree with it. They'll probably be in communication with Judy's office and say, we disagree. This is what we think. And there might be some go back and forth to see if there's a path forward. Or if it's a situation like you indicated, yeah, we have a hole in our roof, we have our properties in dire need of repair, but we have no money. Then maybe the township wants to say, well, will you allow it? Will you authorize us to come on there and cut the grass or do something? But if we do that, if you can't pay us, we're going to just put a lien on the property to secure it. There's a number of potential ways to address those types of situations. Um, but at the end of the day, if someone continuously is arguing with Judy's office and saying, no, no, we're not going to do this. And we haven't pulled the trigger on the district magistrate. That's their day in court. They can try and convince the district magistrate that we're wrong in their fight. Does that answer your question?
Well, Judy, are you satisfied?
I am. Yes.
Something you can work with.
Absolutely.
Mike in March?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't need to see it. I don't need to see it all dress up.
Okay, so. With the revisions that I previously made as well as the removing the posting at the township in one thirty four eleven. Uh, I'll make those and incorporate all those changes. And does the board want to authorize it to be advertised? For a public hearing at one of your future meetings?
Is there time to do that on the twenty second? We would meet the advertising requirements if we put. If we made that motion now and have the public.
I, this is the moment I probably turn to Michelle and ask her if we have time to advertise it.
Well, today's Thursday.
I do know this.
We'll not get it in on Monday, the twelve.
I would maybe wait until you're.
If it went in on the thirteenth or the fourteenth, you would have. Seven or eight days.
Yeah, I think the person needs in July.
Right, same here.
Right, I don't know how, the the question is how how much in advance does a newspaper require to get it in the paper? And that that I actually think it's more than I initially thought because I think we got tripped up. A couple of months ago on one of them.
It is because if you, if he, if we leave tonight on Thursday and call them Friday to have something. In the paper on Monday, it will not happen. So the soonest that it could happen would be Tuesday. The thirteenth. Which would give seven, eight. Eight days. Not counting twenty second.
Well, it's up, it's up to the board. If you want to try and get it in for your second meeting in June or if you just want to wait until the first meeting in July, just let me know and that's what we'll do it for.
You can do it July.
So the first meeting in July then would be a month from from now. Uh, July thirteenth.
Right.
That should give everybody a chance to review it.
That would give the public plenty of time to look at the H O O boards and all of it.
No, nobody told me.
Right, right.
I want to be fair.
Correct, yeah.
There's another question.
Oh, yes.
Would that also be posted on the website?
Once the draft is is done, the draft resolutions go on the website. So do I hear a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare the advertising?
Motion.
And this is to be advertised for the July thirteen.
All second. Uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
The.
To burning.
Sure, the the next one, chapter ninety four burning ordinance. Uh. I don't know if we need to discuss this. Uh, my understanding was. Someone had indicated that there was a an issue with enforcement. I don't know if you can discuss that if there is. Uh.
So Judy's there, that's what I said. Are we okay with the enforcement on that?
With the enforcement of the current.
The way it's written now.
No. The current burning ordinance, I don't, I don't have a copy. I don't know if you guys have a copy in your packet, but I can pull it up online. Um, the problem with the current burning ordinance. Let me just get to it. Is, um. So the current burning ordinance for. For violations and penalties. Uh. Who's the section that I have a problem with here?
Now, if you, we did revise this ordinance back in twenty twenty two.
Oh.
There were, when I first came on board, there were.
Not telling me about that.
I don't know. I may not have, I'm sorry.
Michael Ball.
Uh, no, we adopted this, we adopted the, we adopted the amendment last year in May of twenty twenty two.
Okay, did you pull out that part that said that they had to wait thirty, like after, we had to send a warning letter?
Yeah, if there, if it was in, I, it's, it's been a year.
Yeah.
My memory's gone, but I do remember there were issues that were burn ordinance. So we made revisions to it in the, in May of twenty twenty two. Uh, but then I was just notified last week that there were issues with the enforcement, so I just, I wasn't sure what that was.
Um. The way that I'm reading this now, this is, this is fine. Um.
So repeat offenders can. Receive encouragement to not do this anymore.
So the issue that we had last before before this amendment inherently. Um, that's okay, uh, was that it said that we had to send a warning letter. And that if the offender. Burned again within thirty days of the warning letter, they could get a citation, but essentially on day thirty one, the clock would start again. So they could burn again on day thirty one and I would have to send a warning letter. I couldn't send a citation. This seems like you fixed that, so this should be fine.
Yeah, I last, I mean, my memory's not that great, but my recollection is we made some revisions to definitions.
Okay.
Uh, we made the revision, certain revisions to that section we're talking about.
Uh, right, bonfire, campfire and.
Yep.
Yep. And um, to be honest, we haven't had any repeat offenders this year that I'm aware of. Uh, once they've gotten that warning.
Canada.
Yeah, except Canada. Um, so I mean, I will check with Myra and see if there's been some other concerns that I'm aware of. She didn't.
No, it came off somewhat in conversation around a couple of weeks. Maybe I'm like that.
Maybe.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You know, now that I'm, that you said definitions, I am kind of remembering. That this went around, but I didn't realize that it did go, so. We we don't have to use this tool. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, the, there's nothing else listed under my report, but I did, there was also a comment. Uh, at some point about uh, the fireworks ordinance and I did look at your chapter fireworks. And yours is somewhat, it's from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and there has been some revisions. In the state statute since then, uh, they they uh distinguish between consumer and display fireworks. And there's also certain. And there's also certain provisions that you can incorporate with respect to uh, certain limitations, so, I mean, I can. If you want me to, you know, put ours together circulated for one of your future meetings, amending that chapter. And what we'll prob, what I'll probably do is just do it in complete. Uh, amend that chapter in its entirety, given the amendments to the statutes instead, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, I think that's all I have, thank you.
I think the dates that it refers to are the dates that we have promised for them.
Yeah.
The dates are, I mean, the dates are allowed for one A M, but the dates because.
So, no, so this. So the state statute allows you to restrict consumer fireworks between the hours of ten P M and ten A M. Except on July two, three and four and December thirty-first, when they can be used until one A M. The following day.
So that, that's when people typically complain.
Right, I will say, but what I will say, these consumer fireworks are the ones that. You know, everyone's buying now, these, and they're, they're not, they're, they're air, pretty cool actually. Uh, but they're shoot them off all over the place and, and your. Your, your existing ordinance doesn't, was adopted before that change happened.
Right.
So you don't have provisions addressing just consumer fireworks. What's that?
We don't allow sparklers.
Uh, so, so adopting this up to date one would address those, I mean, there's some, there's, you know. Not within one hundred and fifty feet of a building, the hours of operation. Uh, there's a number of other ones that we can specifically call out for those consumer fireworks. Display fireworks are the ones where it's a professional entity that's out there shooting them up, they're getting a permit. Uh, but consumer fireworks are the ones that you can now buy as an individual and shoot them off, so.
I think there's also an increase in the bond that you can hold, require through the state that we do not. We require a five hundred dollar bond.
Yeah, I don't know if that was necessarily an increase, but your, I think you're right, your ordinance doesn't uh. Have the current bond liability insurance, million dollars. Um, the bond.
The bond is currently only five hundred.
Five hundred dollars? Oh, yeah, the bond uh would be fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And again, that's for display fireworks.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay, so I can put that together pretty quick, I could probably circulate it to you, it's for now in your next meeting.
Okay.
If that's something the board's interested in.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, then, your engineers report.
Yeah, uh, this will be pretty short, but um, as far as for the uh MS four uh requirements. One of the things that was required as part of this five-year permit cycle was. An inspection of all of the uh outfalls within your MS four system and uh, this past month. Um, our office was able to, at David Farm. Our firm was able to swing up and inspect, it's roughly like sixty outfall locations. Uh, and he took a look at those, you do it during dry weather conditions and you're basically checking to see is there any illicit discharge going on. So is there flow coming out of it and the time that you wouldn't expect there to be, um. Basically, is anyone sending non-stormwater flows into your stormwater collection system? Uh, there was only one that had a little bit of flow at the time when they were doing the initial inspections, they swung back up. Uh, cause there's sampling requirements for that, uh, by the time they were back up, it was uh, it was dry at that point, so it could have just been. A little bit of leftover stormwater in there, possibly a very short duration discharge of some sort, but. Uh, nothing else that was required um for the inspection process on that. Uh, so that's something we'll be reporting in our, the, the annual fire reporting in September. Um, but I just wanted to make you aware, I mean, that's nice to see, you know, sixty outfall locations.
Yeah.
Generally no illicit discharge issues going on, so. Uh, yeah, and uh, again, with MS fours, you know, it's always a good thing to just. Remind people, you know, there's like a whole placards often on the, the endless, you know, that it's intended for stormwater only and. You know, not, not to be dumping other non-stormwater fluids down those. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you then. Um, so that now brings us to old business, which is to. Point the roof two oh nine revitalization committee members. Um, well, first, we'll start by saying, you know, thank you to everyone who applied. Uh, we are truly grateful for the abundant responses that we received for this and. How enthusiastically this program was received. So, uh, that said, I would make a motion to appoint, um. The following members from the historical committee, Sonny Murray. From the economic development committee, Deborah Emin. From the planning commission, Bob Early and Nick Theo Filas. And from the public, George Kuchek, Michael Coffey and Ralph Dinkle.
The motion.
That's a motion.
Sorry.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, and that brings us to, so congratulations. We now have a committee, and this is just a reminder that all those meetings are public. The applications are public, uh, we welcome public for input on it. We've also, uh, we've already received comments on Facebook about properties. People feel that we should be revitalizing. So, uh, it's great to see that, now, the economic development committee, you could see from their report, um, what they have been doing. Uh, with this program, Ed's here, Deb's here from the economic development committee. Their next meeting is on June nineteenth. So we hope that the uh newly appointed committee members will join up with E D C. And you'll have a nice little meet and greet at that time. Um, okay, so thank you, um, on to new business, uh, Mike, I believe you have a couple of things.
And make a motion to waive the fee for Stroud Burn High School Bill of Valor for the.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright. Motion to waive the fee for Open Mountain West Dollar Hall with Echo Field.
Sure.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, and then we have the D C Solar Project. Um, which is the company that uh is proposed to install um, the solar panels. Um, regarding the grant that we received for the community and central library. Actually, two grants that we received to cover that roof with solar panels. Um, right now, we have the agreement between that uh company and us in front of us and. We're not quite there yet.
Yeah, I'm still, I actually have a call with them tomorrow, I wanna make sure that they have a, that the contract is on Co-Stars and I believe. Uh, the township is also reaching out uh to confirm that the scope of work is what the township needs uh, at that, at that property.
So, uh, while this agreement is being worked on, I would suggest that uh, somebody make a motion to table it.
Motion to table.
There a second?
Sure.
Okay, comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, and that's it for new business, um, is there any public comment?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Quin, sorry. Um, I know this is probably far ahead of the days, but you have a date yet for, um. December twenty ninth, February.
It's always the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, right, Thanksgiving.
So Mister Christmas will give us the date, man. Want us to happy Christmas?
Yes, true.
It's the. I was saying. Quite good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be good in a decent.
That'll be quite a part.
Well, fireworks too, they get their ordinance.
Yeah. I think um, Stroudsburg has theirs on Black Friday.
Yeah.
So they, they.
These Stroudsburg reviews in the next one.
Yeah, they just have sparklers that's.
Is there any other public comment, anybody in Zoom have any comment? Anyone, okay, there being no public comment, uh, motion to adjourn. Thank you for your attendance, everybody.
Love.
Thank you, everyone.